Good evening and welcome to the November 26, 2024 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here with us tonight, I would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters that are germane to council. On our podium, we have a light system that is three minutes. After stating your name and address, you will see a green light. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. Written remarks may also be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The City Code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to council. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Tina Maluski with Trinity Lutheran Church will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Long will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It is a practice of the council members to stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but are under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, City Council members, and to every member of our Newport News community family. Thank you for the invitation to open up tonight's meeting in prayer. Let us pray. Most wise and holy God, as we gather here tonight, we recall your goodness in giving us this city, its leaders, and the men and women who protect our freedoms and exemplify our responsibilities. We come to you with true gratitude for these gifts. We also confess that due diligence in our vocations totally rely on your assistance. And so we ask that you would guide us in our present duties and direct our paths in the future. Help us to use well the wisdom, gifts, and talents that you have given us as we unify in our decision-making efforts tonight. Hear these petitions and receive all of our praises as we bring them to you in the power of the Holy Spirit and in the name of the One who is the greatest strength and our only hope. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two presentations this evening. For our first presentation, I would like to invite Fire Chief Wesley Rogers to join me at the podium. Chief Rogers notified me that our fire department recently deployed seven dedicated team members to assist FEMA and DMAT in response to the devastation caused by Hurricane Helena. These individuals were on deployment for over three weeks, working grueling shifts to support search and rescue efforts, medical operations, and swift water rescues in severely impacted areas. Their commitment exemplifies the dedication and the skill that our department brings to communities in crisis, and their efforts have made a significant impact on the affected areas. At this time, with the following members of the fire department, please join me at the podium. Lieutenant Curtis Foster, Master Firefighter Medic Mike Todd, Captain Andrew Zeig, Lieutenant John Costillo, Master Firefighter Medic Matthew Bacon, Master Firefighter Kevin Carroll, Master Firefighter Medic Shemara Boone. It's good to see you again. On behalf of our city, we thank you for not only your service to our community, but to communities in need. Thank you all. At this time, I'd like to invite Public Works Director Frank James to come forward. On behalf of the citizens of Newport News, the city council, and myself, I would like to express our sincere appreciation for the thorough and dedicated service you've been providing to the city as a member of the Adopt a Spot program. The Adopt a Spot program was formed to encourage citizens to take an active role keeping our public spaces clean and beautiful. Our all-America city would not be all that it is without the dedicated and selfless service provided by those citizens who dedicate their time, their energy, their skill, and their compassion. On behalf of a grateful community, I would like to recognize three groups that stood out during the fiscal year 2024. I would ask that the following groups come forward to be recognized individually. So first, we're going to have the Newport News Police Department for their extraordinary leadership, service, and dedication completing nine cleanups. The Rotary Club of Wark at City Center for their 12 years of dedicated service completing eight cleanups this year.
I was about to say something.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm sorry. Councilman Long just broke protocol and came down, but I guess it is his Rotary Club, so. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, sir. And a special recognition goes to Mr. Craig McDonald from Better Planet for his dedication, completing six cleanups on his own. At this time, we'll start the business portion of the meeting. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit, Charlie Uniform dash 2024 dash 0009 to Wark Denby Company of Newport News LP and Westgate Indoor Skate Park to allow for the operation of a skateboard ramp in a 5,000-square-feet suite located at 14347 Wark Boulevard, Zone C1, retail commercial. At this time, do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
What?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 31. Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute Amendment Number 30 to the deed of lease buy and between the city of Newport News and Huntington Ingalls for a portion of city-owned property located at 4600 Huntington Avenue for parking purposes. At this time, do we have any speakers?
None. One. Mr. Alan Tanner.
Mr. Alan Tanner.
Good evening, members of council.
Good evening.
Alan Tanner, 11835 Fishing Point Drive, Suite 103, Newport News. I came to talk to you about other matters tonight that are very exciting and hit home, and I saw that we were leasing property to the city property to the shipyard. I question that. The shipyard, as most of you know and anyone that's lived here, for the past 40 to 50 years, has made it a point to try to get all the land they could to park cars on it and park them for their employees, 15% of which live in the city of Newport News. And that has created what we've got downtown Newport News right now. That has got to change. The parking is the most valuable asset, one of the most valuable, and we've got many good assets, but one of the most valuable assets our city owns. Parking spaces now for structured parking, if you look at the cost of the new parking deck that's been approved by the Navy, and I assume it's going to be paid by the taxpayer, is going to cost $60,000 a parking space, if you do the math. $60,000 to build a parking space. Think how long it would take to amortize that debt per space for a very, very long time. And that's what it's going to be. That's the cost. $120 million to build 2,000 more parking spaces. I don't know what the city is renting these spaces for. I just found out about it tonight, and I apologize for not being more informed as to the cost. But I think council going forward should look very hard at one of the biggest assets they have that can produce the most income that will go back to the taxpayer, and that's to effectively monetize the parking. Many lots, many spaces in this city go unenforced. They're filled up at 4:30 to 5 o'clock in the morning. It's just something that needs to be worked together between the public sector, the private sector, the lot owners down there. Most of the lot owners that have lots downtown, there's a lot at the corner of Huntington and 35th Street as you come in town. There are 150 spaces there. It's been available for the last two and a half months. One parker. That's what's there, and the city is taking assets which could be used to create housing, to do those things that is going to be part of the mission of the Good News Project, to monetize those. And I would ask the city to look very hard at any future contracts and actually delay the approval of this project until it's a little bit better scrutinized. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Sorry. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Do we have, can we delay this so that we look further at the investigation?
We can. I think we're actually discussing the, to close public hearing. So wait till the next one, and I'll bring it up. So at this time, we're just talking about discussion to close public hearing. Any further discussion on public hearing? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Move and adopt.
Any discussion? Councilman Woodbury.
Yes, but that doesn't have a second yet.
Yes.
Seconded. Thank you, Tina. Councilwoman Vic.
I would like to delay this item until we do further investigation since the gentleman has brought up these questions about it. I think it is up to the city to know more fully what the ramifications of what this would mean. And I would like to move or suggest that we delay it and study it before we take a final vote.
Request for floor, Mayor Jones. So, we've had this package looking over it over the past week. I think it'll be helpful, Mr. Manager, or someone, if they could speak to this matter, please.
Turn it over to the city manager.
I would ask if Florence Kingston could come forward and address some of the questions that council may have this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. This is a long-term lease that you've had over the years that renews annually with the shipyard. There are over 1,000 spaces here. The facility has, as we are working with the shipyard and the Navy on other parking, this is a resource that as that new parking garage gets built and some of the other spaces will be displaced where there's current parking, this is a facility that will provide some of that. So it is a part of an integrated system with us as we're moving forward on the work for other structured parking.
Are there any questions from city council at this time?
Request for floor.
Vice Mayor.
Florence, can you clarify? This is a one-year lease extension, right?
Yes, and it has a built-in provision of a 3% annual escalator.
Gotcha.
Any further questions from city council?
One question. So after doing this year-time period, we're going to look at the entire parking plan across the downtown area. Is that the whole intent of just having one-year lease for this parking space?
Yeah, this has been a rolling one-year lease that you've had over a long term. And this is part of an area where potentially some of the future parking, structured parking would be going. So it's going to generate revenue while the master parking plan for downtown and working to respond to the Navy needs and the other needs of the shipyard workers are integrated within the system.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Councilwoman Vic.
And it has generated revenue over the years?
Correct.
Under the lease.
Correct. And Mr. Tanner's correct. I think what we're talking about is looking at a comprehensive plan on parking and not just responding to the shipyard and the Navy, but we've been working on a number of scenarios and looking at the master plan and how you meet the parking needs and ensure that as we bring retail services, how you ensure that the new businesses coming into some of these spaces have adequate parking as well.
Is there any further questions from city council? I think we're good, Florence. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I believe at this time, we still have a motion on the table to adopt the ordinance, and it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Against.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carries, six one.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page 37. Minutes of the work session of October 22, 2024. Page 67. Minutes of the regular meeting of October 22, 2024. Page 93. Resolution changing the location of the regular city council meeting of December 10, 2024 to the Gaines Theater at Christopher Newport University located at One University Place. Motion to approve the consent agenda, items F1 through F3, all-inclusive.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Call the roll.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other city council actions. Page 96. Item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Item G1 is a request to amend and reordain City Code Chapter 43. Weapons by amending Section 43-3 prohibiting the possession, carrying, or transportation of any firearm, ammunition for a firearm, or any components or combination thereof. The proposed amendment applies to any building or portion thereof owned or used by the city of Newport News or its entities for governmental purposes, including areas within non-city-owned buildings when used for such purposes, as well as any recreation or community center operated by the city or its entities. In addition to exceptions mandated by state law, this prohibition would not only apply to sworn law enforcement officers, active-duty military personnel acting within the scope of their official duties, security guards employed or contracted by the city in the performance of their lawful duties, or individuals authorized to carry a concealed firearm pursuant to the Federal Law Enforcement Officer Safety Act. Additional exceptions are spelled out in the ordinance. I recommend approval.
Thank you. At this time, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
We'll start in order. Tanisha Press? Sorry if I said that.
Good evening. My name is Tanisha Press. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My address is Two Riverwood Circle, Newport News, Virginia. Concealed weapon handlers should be allowed to carry in government buildings because the Second Amendment protects the right to keep and bear arms and presses upon us the importance of such a right. The Second Amendment to the United States Constitution protects the right of Americans to keep and bear arms for the purpose of self-defense and protection of their property and rights. This amendment in the Bill of Rights says a well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. I'm going to give you an example of when that right was infringed. Virginia Beach, on May 31, 2019, a mass shooting occurred in a municipal building in Virginia Beach. The disgruntled city employee fatally shot 12 people and wounded four others until he was killed by responding police officers. Defensive gun use is when a citizen uses a firearm to stop an assailant from committing a crime. This can include firing, brandishing, or revealing a firearm. A well-regulated militia could have stopped this attack mid-assault. Perhaps 12 souls could have been saved that day in Virginia Beach had they not banned concealed weapon handlers in government buildings. One of the victims was a contractor who was picking up a permit and left his handgun in his truck because the city of Virginia Beach did not allow him to protect himself. He and the others were left defenseless. I, my husband, my sister, my mother, my father, we've all gone through this concealed weapons training and have shown ourselves approved. Please do not make the training that could potentially save our lives or the lives of our neighbor in vain by stripping us of our right to self-defense. Banning concealed weapon handlers in government buildings only protects those who would not obey the law. Legally armed citizens make community, including government buildings, safer. Please do not take away the well-regulated militia in Newport News, Virginia government buildings under the false promise of safety.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Douglas Peterson? Douglas Peterson? Is there a Douglas Peterson? And then after Douglas Peterson, we'll go Michael Shapiro and then Steve Ferguson.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Douglas Peterson. I live at Five Quail Place at Newport News. I've been here for 48 years. I was quite shocked to see this proposal at the last minute. And while we've reviewed what it does and doesn't do, let me ask a couple of questions here. City manager, what was your role in developing this proposal? The spokesperson for the city, who was interviewed by the Daily Press, said that, quote, "The Newport News is committed to ensuring a safe environment for both the public and our employees," unquote. She said that the city is dedicated to its practice of assessing safety vulnerabilities and addressing them within the framework of the law and that, quote, "The security landscape has evolved, particularly in the government sector, and we are responding proactively." Safety vulnerabilities? What vulnerabilities related to CHP holders have been identified during the four years that the current ordinance has been in effect. Framework of the law? I'm sure she means the Constitution. The security landscape in any sector has not devolved into the point of infringing the two-way rights of the most law-abiding group of citizens that is even remotely justified. As a personal note, Dr. Woodbury, thank you for your service on city council for all these years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Michael Shapiro.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Michael Shapiro.
Sir.
I work at 11828 Fishing Point Drive, Newport News. This is not just banning guns in city buildings. This is hampering my safety. I got a concealed carry permit because of my job. I have people that might drop off cash to pay rent, and I have to take it places. Now, if I'm going to go visit Ms. Woodbury and her chambers, what do I do with my gun? If I'm going to pay a bill at Water Works, I can't come in the building because you leased that building without removing my weapon. Where do I put it? Now, we've said we don't want to leave weapons in vehicles where they can be stolen and used to commit crimes. But if I'm in the course of my day, what do I do? Do I run home with a wad of cash, put the gun away somewhere? Do I leave it in my office? If I'm at the Newport News Park with this ordinance and I have to use the restroom, I can legally carry my gun in the park, but you're going to find me, maybe arrest me if I have to go to the bathroom or if I want to rent a canoe? That makes absolutely no sense. You've had more aggravated assaults in the city of Newport News this year. You've had more aggravated assaults in the City of Newport News this year to date than all of last year. But I am guessing that none of you can report how many of those assaults, which mostly involve firearms, were committed by concealed handgun permit holders. And I would suggest none or very, very few. And by the way, that number is about 1,200. I've met with all of you. Well, most of you, not this gentleman over here. And you've never been in fear of your life meeting with me, or most of the people in this room that may carry, because we have done it legally under your system. We've gotten our permit. We've had a background check. We've renewed that permit with the Police Department, and we've passed all of the qualifications necessary to legally carry concealed in the City of Newport News. This ordinance will accomplish nothing but potentially turning law-abiding individuals into criminals. Please do not vote to make this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Ferguson, then Amy Marshall, then Graham Ferguson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor? My name is Steve Ferguson. I live at 200 Parkway Drive in Newport News. The Second Amendment is as clear as an amendment as can be possible, and I'm going to quote it for you. "The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Myself, I believe the current ordinance that you're changing tonight is unconstitutional in regards to the Second Amendment. And now this council would like to go further to infringe on law-abiding citizens' rights. Citizens like myself that have gone, taken the necessary steps to get a concealed weapons permit, did a state background check, proved competency with a handgun application, paid the city money. Yeah, I have to pay the City of Newport News to keep my concealed weapons permit, to renew it. And now this council would like to overstep on citizens' rights. I would encourage the council to protect the rights of the people that you were elected to serve. Vote no. And I would prefer you get rid of the current ordinance that's on the books.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Amy Marshall, then Graham Ferguson, and then Bill. Sorry, you know, thank you. Yeah. I tried.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Jones, my name is Amy Marshall, 866 Rockshire Lane, Newport News, Virginia. I come to you today not affiliated with any person or organization, but simply as a citizen of Newport News. So first off, I just want to say I really appreciate my personal input being taken into consideration when it came to allowing open carry in parks and other areas. But when it comes to the ordinance for City Code, Chapter 43, essentially it is focusing on the governmental workforce. So it seems that this ordinance is directed to those who have a concealed handgun permit. In reinstating laws that are in the public way of right, you are enforcing control in the governmental aspect of the workforce. This could lead to metal detectors, added law enforcement, and in probably the worst case, being physically searched before entering work. From my view, this is more of a form of control than a worry for your citizens' safety. I think this for a few reasons. So in order to receive a concealed handgun permit, you must, one, go through a background check, two, take some form of educational class, and three, the court must require proof that the applicant has demonstrated competence with a handgun. Also, in order to work in a city governmental job, you must go through a criminal background check. So those who are legally concealing firearms have proof by the court system that they are worthy to do so. If you are putting this law in place to try and protect your citizens, it's doing more harm than good, because criminals are going to illegally work, no matter what law you put in place. Those who have proven themselves worthy of a CHP are going to listen to the law, and by doing so, they may put their own safety at risk simply because they no longer have a means to protect themselves. Firearms are the greatest equalizer. If a woman my size was attacked by a medium or large man, she could be brutally hurt and have no way of saving herself. This is not something that should go on in any situation, but really not be risked in the workplace. All this being said, last thing I wanted to bring to attention is the day in which you guys are having this discussion for this topic. Since it is a holiday week, I do believe we are missing representation on this subject because it's the holidays and people are out of town. Because I know personally a few people who would be here, but because of the holidays, they were not able to be here. So on either side of the argument, you're missing representation. So I ask that you would at least consider postponing your vote until after the holidays, just so that you have proper representation from your people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do Graham Ferguson, then Mr. Bill, and then Philip Van Cleve.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers?
Good evening.
My name is Graham Ferguson, 29 Brandon Road, Newport News, Virginia. A couple of points I'd like to make. Number one, are concealed carry permit holders a problematic subset of society? Because your proposal here is restricting their access to firearms. You're not restricting the fire, the access to the problematic people at all. The criminals are completely unaffected by this. Number two, will the city bear responsibility for the personal safety of those who must enter their gun-free zone shooting ranges? If I was a member of the family from somebody in Virginia Beach that got shot, and my family member was victim number four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, or 12, the City of Virginia Beach would be hearing from my lawyer, because someone should be held responsible. You restrict people's access to defend themselves, and then you open them up to expose them to whatever walks down the street. Another point. The way concealed carry works is a rational criminal must consider everyone as potentially armed. In an environment where no one can legally be armed, the criminal has free rein and is usually the only person armed, except for maybe an easily identifiable security guard, who I would not want to be under those circumstances, because he'll be the first one shot. Another point is women will be more adversely affected than men because of this, because access to Colt's Great Equalizer will be further restricted. Another point, which may be a little bit contentious, but as some on the left would propose that the police force is systematically racist. If that's the situation, how can you say that only the police should have guns is a rational position to hold? Another issue I'd like to bring up is please take note of the ratio of those supporting this measure versus those who are against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to go for it. Mr. Bill Basabalucio. Okay.
No cigars. Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you on this matter. My name is Bill Basabilbaso, and I live at 839 Wymouth Drive in Newport News, Virginia. I just have a couple of questions and some, I want to follow on comments. If this has already been addressed, please forgive me, but I had them pre-written. What prompted this change to Chapter 43? I mean, there has to be a justification or a cause that caused somebody to say, "We need to restrict further." So the second question that begs is, have we had a rash of incidents with concealed carry permit holders? I haven't read of any. I am very closely tied to the Police Department, and I haven't heard of anything. So these are questions that I think need to be answered. Concealed carry permit holders have to provide proof of training, right? Personally, my training came from 37 years of serving this country. One of the things that I did was defend our Constitution. And I passed many, many background checks, from security clearance to the city granting me my concealed carry permit. We are responsible law-abiding citizens. We are not the problem. So my request to you is to seriously consider this, be fair about it, and understand that we are law-abiding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Philip Van Cleve, Philip Gloud, and then Ralph Redman.
Mr. Mayor, City Council?
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Philip Van Cleve. I'm the president of the Virginia Citizens Defense League. Some of you may remember a big rally in Richmond where 50,000 gun owners showed up. That was us. And Richmond, not zero crime that day, and Richmond was cleaner after we left, it turned out. So government is tasked with protecting our rights. It's not tasked with infringing. It's there to make sure that our rights of free speech and our rights to search and seizure and so forth are all protected. The Second Amendment is one of our basic civil rights. And some, the permit holders are actually demonstrably the most law-abiding citizen in the Commonwealth. The state police follow this. Anytime a permit's revoked for any reason whatsoever, and most of that can have nothing to do with crime, could be maybe a mental health issue or something of that nature, maybe, or maybe misdemeanor, but not violent crime, that's extremely rare. The revocation rate is a fraction of 1% and there are 750,000 permit holders in the state. Some of those permit holders have permits because their lives are under active threat. It could be an ex-spouse that wants to kill them and means it. Anytime you set up a zone, it's a gun-free zone like this, you're then setting them up for the potential of being murdered, and it happens. It happens outside of places like courthouses. So I think you really need to consider that protecting the lives of people that have gone to the trouble of getting these permits, the people that get these permits aren't doing it as a hobby. They're doing it because they seriously are concerned about their safety, as everybody should be, as you should be for your own. They get the training. They pass a background check. They have, they pay a fee to get the permit, and they have to update all of that information. They're watched by the government. Again, heaven help you, you know, you commit certain crimes, your permit's gone. So there's really not a problem here. And I, we would strongly urge you to vote against this proposed ordinance. If you're going to do, keep part of it, keep the part that frees up parks and permanent events that's been off limits for all the, all this time. We sued the City of Winchester over that, and they got rid of those, both of those, when the judge said that was unconstitutional. So getting rid of that's a smart idea. Thank you very much. And please vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Philip Gloud, and then Ralph Redman, Mark Jordan, and then Melissa Anderson.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Philip Gloud. I live at 3 Anderson Circle, Newport News. I'm not sure exactly what you're trying to accomplish with this, you know, as everyone else has said. We're not really a problem. The City of Newport News has a lot of other problems that y'all shouldn't really be concentrating on. And I've lived here my whole life, 60 going on 60 years, and I've just seen it not go well. I mean, you've got people leaving the city, taxpayer, house-buying people leaving Newport News. And, you know, people have always asked me, "Why do you stay there? Why do you stay there?" Because I, it's my hometown. I wanted to stay here. But now, things are changing, and my wife and I are considering leaving, like a lot of others. As, and I agree wholeheartedly. I can't really say anything else other than what everyone else behind me has said so far. I agree wholeheartedly. But the whole concealed carry permit holders being safe people, and especially the fact of having to leave your weapon in a vehicle, possibility of it getting stolen, you know, it's just, you have other problems that we need to be dealing with, personally, I feel. And I hope that you will not change this statute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Ralph Redman Small. I live here in the City of Newport News at 509 Beach Drive. I also work for this great city. I don't believe you guys should pass this due to the fact that 31 years ago, I signed a check. I served this military. I served this country in the military, here in Newport News, right there at Fort Eustis. I now work for this city. You guys want to sit here and make it where we can't take our guns inside of a city building? It's bad enough we can't even take a cell phone in the city hall when we have evidence on it for a traffic stop or whatever else it might be. It's bad enough we can't even do that. I can't even walk into that courthouse over there and go in there and renew, renew this concealed weapons permit with my cell phone on my hip. I have to take it off. I have to leave it in my car. And now you want me to leave my gun in my car, where there is multiple times that you've seen on Next Door Neighbor app that people are going in other people's cars, whether they're locked, whether they're not locked, they're going through their cars at night. We don't think this happens during the day in the city? Of course it does. If they're doing it at night with Ring cameras and video surveillance on your house, what makes you think they're not going to do it in a parking lot across the street from, from the courthouse? Or a parking lot, a parking garage over at City Center where there is no surveillance? If I got to go in and pay a bill or go in and do a, go to a class at 700 over there in City Center, to go to a class, when I'm off the job, I carry my gun with me all the time, all the time. And there are days that I got to go, because I work at night, I got to come in during the day and go to a class over there in City Center in the James Room. You think I want to leave my gun in my car? No, I don't. I just don't, I don't want to. Like I said, 31 years ago, I signed my name on a dotted line. I swore a note to the Constitution, just like all y'all did, and just like all these sworn officers behind me and any other person that was in the military. Let us keep our rights. That's all we're asking. You guys already took it to where we had to have these to be in the building. We are not the problem. We done everything you want. And I've, I've renewed this here four or five times now. But you guys still want to take more? You want to take more? Do you guys like your jobs? Because I can tell you almost every citizen behind me will step up next time. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have Mark Jordan, and then Melissa Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council, I appreciate the time and opportunity to come and speak with you. Congratulations on your retirement, Dr. Woodbury. And I would first like to start by saying how proud I was particularly of you, Mayor Jones. Several months ago, there were a group of students that came and spoke. I was working with council in preparation for a remote session, and I saw some of the kindest, most generous, patient, gracious treatment of young students who got up to speak, who were nervous, who had probably never spoken in such front of a large crowd or such important persons. And I applaud you for that. That was greatly appreciated. I would like to stand in opposition to this ordinance. There are over 22 million concealed weapon permit holders in the United States, as has been said before, I think there's 700,000 in Virginia. There's a continuing increase of requests locally. There's prominent citizens, officials, important people across the nation in Newport News who carry, who have concealed weapons permits, and these are people of note. Americans use firearms for self-defense 500,000 to 3 million times a year. That's legal, law-abiding citizens using their Second Amendment right to protect themselves or others. These items have been in the news repeatedly. We constantly see news of where these cases have come before the Supreme Court, appellate courts, general courts, and are constantly being turned to where the government agencies are being told, you can't do this, it's unconstitutional. This has happened repeatedly in the past eight years, to the point that we're now, many of the cases that have gone up don't really face much chance of being upheld. I strongly suggest this one would face the same fate. Are we prepared as a city and as citizens to pay the court costs for such a pursuit? CHP holders are the most law-abiding, vetted, personally invested, and trained citizens. One-sixth, not one-sixth, one-sixth of law, of those citizens are typically less violations than the police. Why make this change instead of enforcing existing laws? Why punish the most law-abiding over acts of criminals? What would be the cost in time for this? Who's going to pay the price for this type of disarmament of law-abiding citizens? Thank you, and you have a very good evening.
Thank you. I think we have Melissa Anderson. I think you'll be the last one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Melissa Anderson, and I'm a longtime resident of Newport News. I am also the victim of a crime, and I come before you tonight to ask you to please vote against banning concealed carry in government facilities. I am a law-abiding citizen who only wants to protect myself from those who are not law-abiding and who seek me harm. It would be frightening, and I believe unconstitutional, based on the Supreme Court's Bruin decision, for me to be less safe simply because I'm in a government building such as a library. The proposed change will not stop criminals, but it will stop crime victims like me from protecting myself. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight and considering my concerns about this most important civil right and public safety issue.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, do we have any more speakers? Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? And I'll, I can go first or I can go last, but is there any discussion?
I do.
Councilman, then I'll go last. Councilman Long?
Yeah, one thing I want to mention, and I didn't hear that in the conversation or the public input, and I will say, I really, really appreciate everyone coming down and speaking on, for this ordinance. But one thing that wasn't mentioned is that this ordinance also sets up for our public buildings to have metal detectors. So as people have said, that they will be unsafe in public buildings, that would not be the case. All of our city buildings will have some form of metal detection, so it's not preventing law-abiding citizens that have concealed carry permits disarm them, it's actually stopping anyone, even one that's one that wants to bring a gun illegally, they'll be going through a metal detector. So you will be safe in that, in that public building. I don't think that was really reported when I saw the news, but I'll be in favor of this ordinance because I've always worked inside of protected environments. I worked at the shipyard, I worked at Dominion Power Plant, and my entire career, I always worked in a space where no one was allowed to bring a weapon in, so I felt safe. So this ordinance is really set up to make sure that the public is safe as well as employees in these buildings are safe. I've heard someone mention about the Virginia Beach shooting. Well, this would not be the case here in Newport News, and we're trying to be, take a proactive approach to preventing any type of violence to occur in our city buildings. So those that aren't concealed carry permit holders or are gonna come into a space, they will know that they'll be in a safe space, just like the courts, just like a lot of federal buildings. These spaces too are also protected from people bringing guns into these buildings. Now, you can always keep your gun in a secure parking, in the parking lot. All our secure parking lots are secured and monitored, so the thought that your car is gonna be broken into, well, the thought that your car's gonna be broken into, I think that's, that's not for concern, but that's something we'll make sure, the city manager, make sure our parking lots are safe and secure. So not preventing you from bringing your gun to the public building parking lot, just not being able to bring your gun inside the building.
Any, any further comments from City Council?
No, he said...
You know, I have to, but I, I'll be the last one.
I just wanted to say that I, I am thankful that you all have come to be able to voice your concerns, and I appreciate all of the information, all of the data that you have presented to us tonight as counsel. But where I am standing for this is because we do have to ramp up safety even in, as we have our city council meetings, this is an entirely different day now where we are in jeopardy of just sitting in here. And so, because anybody can come in there and, and the door, thankfully, we have security. But I have heard what you all have said, and you make some good points, but I'm glad we're having this discussion because I think we do have to do something different. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
John? Oh, sorry, Councilman Ely.
I appreciate everybody coming out, sharing their opinion, and we, I appreciate everybody's comments, and people are coming to Newport News. This is a great city. So let's start there. During the housing market is overwhelmed with people looking for somewhere for housing. And also, people love Newport News, this is a great city. This is why I don't want to move. But I do believe that people should have the right to carry their gun where they want to carry their gun. This is a free country, this is America, this is the land. And I want to be able to, if someone comes to me and attacks me, to defend myself and shoot them. If you cause harm against me or my family, I want to be able to defend myself. That's my American right. So I appreciate everybody for coming out today. This is America, this is a free country, and thank y'all so much.
I think I'll be the last one to speak on this. So first, I just want to say, thank you for everyone that's coming, we appreciate the time. I know it's a, it's a late, late night. I think everyone here knows I was serving the Marine Corps for the past decade. I have a concealed carry license, I think I have more guns than anyone on this dais. No need to disclose how many weapons that you have. So I understand the concerns about infringement. As mayor and as members of city council, the safety and security of citizens, of employees and residents is top of mind all the time. All I think about is how can we increase the safety and the security of this place? That's why with city council, we ask the Department of Homeland Security to do a security audit, right? When you look at the jails, when you look at the General Assembly Building, when you look at the Governor's Mansion, when you look at the courthouse, when you look at flights, I cannot bring my AR-15, I can check it, I cannot bring it into public buildings. That, that is all that we're doing. We need to harden the security infrastructure. I, I've talked to Mayor Dyer in Virginia Beach, that was a worse thing that can happen to a mayor, is someone brings in a gun and, and ends the lives of up to 12 individuals. So this is not an infringement of anyone's right, this is how I look at it, this is we are taking steps to protect everyone. We're not gonna go into every single security detail, but you are gonna see metal detectors in a lot of city buildings if this does pass here tonight, because ultimately, the safety and the security of not only our children in the schools, but also in these buildings, it has to be paramount. So I understand, you'll probably still see me shooting my weapons at the gun club or other things, feel free to come and talk to me. I understand the passion for this. I also have a, you know, concealed carry license, but as a city, with the advice of Homeland Security, we are now living in a different time. A different time in which multiple people on this council have received credible death threats, a time in which our soon-to-be president was almost assassinated. These are dangerous and perilous times, and you add in the factor of, I don't think, it's not gonna be any of you that do this, but someone who's suffering from mental condition can easily walk up upstairs, get 12, 15 rounds off, very, very easily. It is not on you, it's for everyone. And so that's all the comments I have. But for, for the minutes, because I'm very proud of this, shootings are down in the city 30%, homicides are down 50%. So for the minutes, please put that down. At this time, call the roll.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Against.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion Carry, six, one.
Thank you. And Phil, please feel free to stay, but if you do want to exit the meeting, we can take 10 seconds or so, but I would hope that you stay, we have a lot, lot to get to. Page 101, item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending and re-ordaining Section 2-11 of the City Code, which establishes residency requirements for appointees to city boards and commissions. The proposed amendment seeks to expand eligibility for appointees to include individuals who are, one, residents of the city, two, own property or business in the city, three, are employed in the city, and four, have and maintain a substantial business or professional interest or undertaking in the city or a significant connection to the city's welfare. Specific residency requirements for certain boards and commissions, such as the Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Library Board, will remain unchanged. I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers? Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion at this time? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion Carry, seven, zero.
Thank you. Page 107, item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to approve resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a Commonwealth's Department Opportunity Fund performance agreement with Newport News, Hampton, and Lieber America Incorporated, Virginia Economic Development Partnership, and the Economic Development Authorities of the city of Newport News and the city of Hampton. The expansion includes a $72 million investment in the creation of 175 new jobs. State incentives include Commonwealth's Development Opportunity Fund, an Enterprise Zone Job Creation Grant, a Port Economic and Infrastructure Development Grant, the Virginia Job Investment Program, and manufacturing, sales, and use tax exemptions. I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that seeing projects that, with the partnerships that we have in, for this project, is so exciting to be able to be a part of the leadership and be a part of this city, that we are actually working to be able to bring and partner with people who can bring economic development here, which of course increases the opportunity for so many of our citizens to be able to have employment and quality employment. And not only that, to be able to generate more income and revenue for our city. So I'm just excited about this project moving forward and glad that we're able to have this opportunity.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vick. Any further discussion from city council? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion Carry, seven, zero.
Thank you. Page 111, item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating the $1,500,000 Commonwealth's Department Opportunity Fund grant supporting the expansion of Lieber America Incorporated. Lieber America Incorporated is expanding its facility in Copeland Industrial Park with a $72 million investment in the creation again of 175 new jobs, and qualifies for several state and local incentives, including a grant from the Commonwealth's Development Opportunity Fund. I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion Carry, seven, zero.
Thank you. Appropriations, page 114, item H, Mr. Manager.
We have two appropriations this evening. The first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $289,330 from local revenue and federal revenue for equipment, supplies, and training for the purchase of replacement engines on existing marine vessels, portable radios, personal protective equipment, and maritime training. The funding will also enhance safety for personnel, ensure police personnel remain certified, and update portable radios to ensure compatibility with current communication The second appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $5,500,000 from fiscal year 2025 bond authorization, public buildings category for major renovations and repairs. This appropriation supports the maintenance of city buildings by addressing structural needs and improving energy efficiency and enhancing interior conditions. Planned initiatives include HVAC replacements at major facilities, updates to building automation systems, and floor covering replacements. I recommend approval of the appropriations.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve item H1 and H2.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion Carry, seven, zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments, item I, citizen comments on matters germane to council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me.
Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Bethany, members of the city council, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
I am Andrew Millard, 13136 Warwick Boulevard. I am the minister at the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of the Peninsula and a member of Pastoring the City, though this evening I speak only for myself. I want to read you a letter that I submitted a couple of weeks ago to the Daily Press that was just published today. On September 10th, I sent letters on behalf of Pastoring the City to each of the members of the joint city of Newport News Christopher, Christopher Newport University Task Force, investigating the creation and expansion of the university through the near elimination of the thriving black community on and around Shoe Lane. In our letter, we asked for transparency from the task force, we asked if the task force had met with residents of Johnson Terrace or other representatives of the Shoe Lane neighborhood, and we asked for members of Pastoring the City to be admitted to the next meeting of the task force or otherwise to meet individually. to the next meeting of the task force or otherwise to meet individually with the task force member. We heard back from one member of the task force, who said that our requests would be conveyed to the co-chairs to ensure that they were appropriately addressed. In the two months since then, we have heard nothing more. Speaking for myself, I would like to know why the task force is operating in near secrecy. The meetings of this body appointed by the city council and a public university are not open to the public. We don't know where or when they are. The meeting minutes are not made available, nor is the task force willing to answer questions from the impacted families, reporters, clergy, or other concerned citizens. I am far from alone in wanting to know what the task force is actually doing. Do any of us have any reason to believe that this investigation will result in anything substantive, let alone the restorative justice that is so desperately needed? One more thing I will add. I met some of the remaining residents of the neighborhood on Sunday, and they shared with me how they have been badly treated by the university. So I'll close with this. Trust needs to be earned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Kessler? And then Liz Parker. I think I saw Liz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Mr. City Manager and the council.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Kessler. I am working at 10413 Warwick Boulevard, and I represent Link of Hampton Roads. I'm here tonight to thank the city for its continued support of our winter shelter. I am the port manager. Port is people offering resources together, and we really is giving resources together through the city's support and its various departments, our partner organizations, and our nonprofit. We provide winter shelter for our unhoused guests. Excuse me. Last year, we had over 700 people come through our doors, and that is in 140 days of operation. This year, after 20 days of operation, we've had over 200 people come, and that includes children from two months old to senior citizens over 80 years old coming through our doors and getting services. So I'm just here to thank you for your continued support so that we can provide a safe place and a meal and other services for those who are most vulnerable.
Thank you.[791.61][791.64][applause] Councilwoman Vick has a question?
Thank you. Thank you for your words and your concern for our people who are unhoused and, and having situations. But I need to ask you, are, are we as a city still, I, I'd heard you mention two months old, so are we as a city still working with the Human Services Department?
Yes.
So that people in those situations may be able to get additional service for their children?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, like I was saying, the various departments, which includes Human Services, and on the night that we have children who come in who are five and under, we do immediately call Department of Human Services and through the city's support again, they get into a hotel instead of staying at the shelter and then get a, a appointment to meet with Social Services so they can hopefully get rapid rehousing.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for everything you do. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Liz Parker? And then Bert Manslack?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Mr. City Manager and City Council. Good to see everyone. Happy Thanksgiving. I'm gonna say that now before I forget it because I probably will. My name is Elizabeth Parker. I am the interim executive director at Link of Hampton Roads. We are located at 10413 Warwick Boulevard. The purpose of me coming here today, and as Michael had mentioned, is about, we are here to say thank you so much to all the departments within the City of Newport News, and I'm gonna rattle them off a little bit. I'd like to thank the Assistant City Manager, Ginger Blunt-Moore, for all of her help, Kimberly Thomas, who has helped us a great deal, David Hudson, who is also part of CSB. We have had so many individuals within our city, city government, as well as our residents, really come to our aid in our current need. Link of Hampton Roads is consisted of many departments. One of the first division we have is Community Services and Emergency Services, and those are for those families who are in dear dire need that have just been evicted from their home because they weren't able to handle the increase that may have been bestowed against them. We have many people in our community that are just not able to pay the $1,400 or $1,800 a month for rent for a one-bedroom apartment. So our emergency services team, we make sure that those individuals get fed. We also take food to their door, as well as they are more than welcome to come through our doors, and we'll provide for them. We also have another program, which is called Can Link, which is part of the HUD program. We have over 74 units that we are responsible for, that we help those in need to find space. It is not part of Section 8, it is a whole different program. Our next one is SSVF, which is the Select Service for Veteran Families. We have over 220 members of that, of those individuals, family members that are veterans. Currently, one of the things that Michael did not mention is that, mention right now is that we have 45 veterans that are homeless, that are part of our program, that are part of PORT's program. We also have what's called the Veteran Bridge Housing, and the Veteran Bridge Housing is where we actually operate and own two homes in Hampton. One is here located in Newport News, and we offer and help those individuals that are our veterans that have had, have fallen on very hard times and is part of the VA program. We help them with bridge housing and able, to allow them and to enable them to be able to move on and to be able to be part of community again. In closing, I just wanted to, to say thank you for everything that you've done because we would not have been able to do this, and I want to also mention too, the partnership that we have, that the city has with Riverside Hospital. The nurses that are there each and every night absolutely are helping those that have need, have, if it's a, a situation with a, a mental illness individual or someone who just may have a fever or things of that nature, or needs to have a COVID test, they're there to help us. So I appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1068.11][1068.14][applause]
Bert, Bert Manslack? Then John James, then Robin Van Tine?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving before I start. City Manager, Mayor?
Sir.
Counsel. My name is Bert Manslack. I live at 11 West Governor Drive in beautiful Newport News. I'm here, I was here this spring. I think maybe you remember. Sand traps in the golf course, 96 of them need serviced with sand. That's why they're called sand traps. After our meeting, there was an enhanced effort that put sand in the traps in the spring. Over the summer, now fall, near winter, the golf courses played, they've diminished. Asking counsel, mayor, manager, I'll pay for a round of golf with you on our beautiful Newport News golf courses, either the championship course or the Cardinal course. If you've never been there, it's a beautiful place. You're not supposed to hit the ball in the sand traps, but I do. But they're not sand in them. I mean, we've got lakes in them. We've got hardpan, which is called, which is sometimes good because it'll skid off the trap. But I'm asking, work with our maintenance people, somehow, I wouldn't think three truckloads maybe a month, a quarter, and our enhancement with our team that's, takes a wonderful job. The greens are great, fairways are nice, they're blowing the leaves off of the fairways this time of year. Take a look at the course. Take a look at some of the other courses in our surrounding seven cities. This is a beautiful place to live. It's recreational. Young kids play the golf. Old guys like me play the golf. Some play a lot better. I'm not too good. I'm in them traps a lot. Please, I know we've had some real serious discussion about things that are happening in our community. I'm here just to talk a little bit about the recreation that many people take part of. In case you don't know, 60,000 people play rounds of golf at Newport News in one year. I'll reach out, you have my address, I'll pay for a round of golf with you. I will even do this. Superintendent of the golf course, I'll go out with him. I'll volunteer once a month and walk around and point out some of the golf courses that need enhancement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.[1288.36][1288.39][applause]
John, John James, and then Robin Van Tine?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The last time I was here, I talked about the church in St. Paul, which is 221, well, 223 34th Street, Newport News, and, and the things that we were doing in there. I like to say that, you know, first, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, but I also would like to say that it's been a great turnaround that I've seen with the programs and how all the programs are connecting and working together. As far as even I heard about the port and the people that come through my office, we send them to the port, and as we send them to the port, because what we do is housing assistance, we do job search, we help them with life coaching to develop the homeless, you know, to help them to develop to get back into society. It's one thing you having somebody come out of homelessness, but they still have that same mentality. You know, they've been living that way for such a long time. So there's life, life trainings that they have to go through to get back to the proper place in society, and just putting them in an apartment, they'll still have that same behavior pattern. So we make, we look, make sure that they have that, and this is all happening inside of 221 34th Street. And what we also, with, with Fort Oaks, when we deal with our, with the help from them, when we get people ready for apartments, we partner with them so that they can help us with the apartments and placing people in apartments out of homelessness. So this is what happened in the 30 time, 30-day time spirit, period that I told you from the last time. When I said I was gonna get busy, we went down and we got busy. We actually, I like, I like it because like every last organization is feeding off of one another, and I've seen that. I had somebody come in my office and say, hey, I said, oh, what are you gonna do? He says, I'm gonna go to the port. Can I sign up for the port? And then I said, I have the information right here. I don't even know this man, with a guy that does the port, but I have his information on my desk to send people there, and that's how we gotta interact and work. So I thank y'all for setting up this opportunity for people to come through. Last but not least, I wanna talk about mental illness, and with the mental illness, they have people that set these programs up where you could stay in the hotel. Sometimes that's good because when it's good, they had it for 30 days, then it went down to 14 days, and now it's two to four days. Well, what's the difference in that is basically they have people that they added the pharmacy in there and then the agents and stuff like that, that they have to, you know, basically pay off also. So they don't get the help. So if they get evaluated, and they only get two days out, out, right? And I'm asking the council, could y'all look at this, and mayor, and they get evaluated, and they only out, not in a hotel for, only for two days, and then $3,000 of their Medicaid is used up when they used to get a month.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's very serious, and it's not, you know, I need y'all to just take a look at that, but.
Will do.
We're moving.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm proud of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Van Tine?[1525.33][1525.36][applause]
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Members of city council, it's good to see you again.
Good evening.
Been a while. I, I'm Robin Van Tine, resident of 105 Cannon Drive, Newport News, Virginia. I have been a citizen of this, this city for almost half a century. Proud to, proud to be part of this city. I was appalled a couple of years ago when I learned about how CNU got its land and that the previous council from those days had voted to eminent domain to remove the houses and members of this thriving black community to put the university in that place when they could have put it somewhere else that was cheaper. It was a grave injustice that was done to that community. So I'm arguing, pleading for a true restorative justice in this case. Thank you for establishing the task force with CNU, but why is it not transparent? Why? I'm on the Waylands Board. We can't even, three of us get together publicly because of transparency laws. Why is the task force not transparent? Please do the right thing. Those families need restorative justice. Thank you for all your good work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.[1621.86][1621.89][applause]
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lauren Dobson.
Can you keep it the mic just a little down?
Sorry. My name is Lauren Dobson, and I'm a student at Christopher Newport University. I'm a communications and journalism major, and I currently in a journalism, community journalism class where we pick a community of our choice to write about. I chose the community of Salter's Creek, right here along the James River in Newport News, to highlight the flooding impacts of the community, that the community faces. In regards to this community, what provisions are going to be made in the upcoming year and years to come to combat these flooding impacts? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1671.11][1671.14][applause]
And then it says, Alan Tanner, questions only? Do we have any questions? No, I think we're good. I, I can, I can say my part. If you wanna go, Alan, you can come.
I wanted to state.
Yeah.
On this subject.
Yeah.
I'm sorry it came out that way. I said something about the parking earlier, but this is what I really wanna introduce, and I've, I've spoken to council twice about the Good News Project. That has been started by a very small group of erstwhile citizens that really wanna make a change here in downtown Newport News. We wanna make this a place for the Navy, for our citizens, to live, work, play, and pray. And in that regard, over the past year, I have had the opportunity to serve on two committees. Mayor Jones, serving on the Harvard Bloomberg Study Committee, and Councilman Long, serving on your housing committee. I thank you very much. I'm humbled by it and the task that you're about to do. I have created a fund. It's called the Opsone Fund of America. The Opsone Fund has been with us for about seven years now, I think 2016 or 17, and the city introduced that fund to the community through the development years ago. Now is the time to take that fund to a different level in hopes of making this the world's greatest harbor and one of the world's great cities as part of that Harvard Bloomberg Study. Some of the things that we've accomplished so far in the funding is attracting a, a, a contract to build and, and renew the Palace Theater that I'm reviewing currently. We have got to create a community here in downtown, which has been the focus of the Harvard Bloomberg Study. This is the little study we got, and they said the focus area is from approximately Thirty-Fifth Street to City Hall, and then goes from the railroad tracks to the, to the water. We have a tremendous opportunity to create housing. One of my current partners is going to Japan to look at their shared housing, housing products. I have met with a, and he is now one of my partners here in managing parking and monetizing parking for Express Park, which will be in forty states and will be tied into monetizing and helping parking lot owners and cities and municipalities monetize their parking assets. We are currently working on a transportation plan that will allow the citizens that wanna work down here to get to and from the city a lot easier and a lot safer. Our current, my time's up.
Your, your time's up, but you, you always got my cellphone, Alan.
Yeah, I do. And I've got everybody's cellphone, and for all those council people that have talked to me, I know of no other way to introduce this to the city.
Well, you haven't answered my calls at least the last two or three.
Well, I know why you called me.
So, so, look, look.
You know I was, you know I, you've gone on the walk with me. You've gone on the walk.
I will.
I, I, sir, we have it, we have a fraction, and we will talk with staff about downtown. I know there's a lot of new energy and development coming. We have this, I have this fraction.
I've got thirty-five days.
I got it.
To get the funds started and funded.
Got it.
And the projects we've got now with Jonathan Provost, a joint project on the waterfront to develop there, I can't do it fast enough.
Got it.
And I need your help. And my plan was submitted three years ago, and I've heard nothing about this plan for parking.
Thank you, sir. We'll take a look at it.
Thanks.
Well, does, does Ms. Mabel have it, though? The, those documents?
Well, development had it.
Okay.
The former mayor had it and council years ago. When I developed the plan, the Navy said we want seventy-five hundred parking spaces, and we wanna rent them for fifty, seventy-five, and a hundred years.
Okay.
That got my attention.
If you just give me, I don't, I don't, I, I work every day, so if you just give me a copy, I will review it this week. I, I just need a copy to Ms., to Ms. Mabel, and I'll, I'll take it. I will look at it Thursday. What, what's? Oh. I didn't know. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't know.
Well, call me, I'll be with my grandchildren at the house.
I got you. I got you. Thank you all, thank you all. Our next item will be new business. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take this opportunity to offer my sincere condolences to Councilwoman Tina Vick for the loss of her nephew Calvin Gilmore Vick. And I'd also like to wish everyone in attendance here this evening, those who are watching, who are in some way connected here to our activities at City Hall, a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney.
I'd just echo that. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. My condolences to Councilwoman Vick and her family, and also wish Darlene Bradbury happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Darlene.
Happy birthday.
City Clerk.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and I extend my condolences to Councilwoman Vick as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Long.
Also extend my condolences to Councilwoman Vick on the loss of her nephew. Want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and sharing your concerns. And the last thing is, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thanks.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Yes, thank you so much for coming down and sharing your thoughts and your ideas and your wonderful participation in your city government. And next month, on the tenth, will be my last one, and I hope a lot of you are there, because it will be at CNU, and it's gonna be a good party. It's gonna be a going away party. But I also want to talk about the gun situation, because I don't want anybody taking my gun. I have a gun, and there are two others in the house, but I have my own. And that is not the intent, was not the intent of this, because the, the point is, we all have that right, but we also know that some people are not very cognizant about proper behavior, or how to use them, or how or when it is proper. So, I, I just want you to understand that I think what we were doing was just trying to be on, on the side of, era on the side of, of right and, and protection of everybody, because we know what can happen when there is not someone there with. But we have really competent people here, as you can turn around and see our chief right back there. He's wonderful. And, but I do thank you. And I, I also want to talk about the future of the downtown, which is going to be so exciting. And I know is on the HRT board, we're even looking again, and they've done a study already of the possibility of having a, a ferry from downtown Newport News to, over to Norfolk and Portsmouth again. So, that is going to be a real, they've done the study, and it's possible, and that Twenty-Eighth Street is where they want it. So, stay tuned, it's gonna be great. And thank you all so much for your support and, and sometimes not for your support. But even at that, I love you all, so thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Councilwoman Vick.
Well, first, first and foremost, I do wanna say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And Mr. Van Tine, it has been a while since you've been down here, so I wanted to just single you out and say, I'm so glad to see you and glad to know that you're well. And you're still fighting for concerns in our city, particularly that Christopher Newport situation was something that was, that has troubled a lot of people. So, I, I'm glad that you all are a part of the team. I wanna thank everyone, wait, first, the student who, is the student still here from CNU? Oh, she left? Okay. I wanted to try to get her some information about that Salters Creek area. So, if we have her information, I don't know how much information she left, I would like to get in contact with her, this CNU student. And I wanna definitely thank you, Mr. Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Bethany, Councilman Illey, City Manager Alan Archer. And if I missed anybody, my nephew Calvin Gilmore was killed in a tragic car accident a couple of weeks ago, and the funeral was yesterday. And I just wanna thank all you, Mayor, and for the entire council for all of your love and support during that such a difficult time for me and my family. And so, with that, only, only thing I gotta say before I go, whatever, whoever the person was that talked about everybody's leaving the city, from our last census, I just have to clarify this and make sure we have the correct data. Our census has increased, I mean, during the census count, our, our population has increased. It showed an increase. So, I just wanna make sure that's on the record. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Illey.
I would like to also give my condolences to Councilwoman Vick and her family. Babe was a great guy, the community loved him, and it's just so unfortunate that we had to lose him. My condolences go to your family. I also want to thank Tina Vick and the city council for helping us reach our goal, and city staff with the basketball league. We up to over two hundred kids now and twenty coaches. So, we will have a basketball league in the East End, and it will be free of charge for our kids. So, we so excited to have that come to the East End part of Newport News.
And I want to just remind you that you got one basketball, but there are twenty more waiting for you.
Yes, and Pat and her team, Mrs. Ferguson, they donated twenty basketballs to the league. So, we're so thankful for you and your team for that great contribution to kids. We'd definitely love that. And my mom, she is a coach. She, she went to the coaches' meeting. She said, John, I don't know what I'm gonna do, these parents are gonna yell at me. But I said, Mom, you signed up for this? So, she's excited. She brought all her kids' Christmas baskets already. So, she got the ten, I think, ten to eleven year olds. So, she's excited to be a coach. So, anybody that's interested in being assistant coach who really knows basketball, please help my mom, because I don't know what she's doing. Also, I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Cherish your loved ones, spend time with them. This is gonna be our first Thanksgiving without our grandmother and grandfather, and that's been a tradition for over forty years. So, it's gonna be very hard for us. So, we trying to figure out what this Thanksgiving look like. We're contemplating going to New York, going to Washington DC, but who knows what we're gonna do. We'll figure it out, I guess, tomorrow, Thanksgiving Thursday. But enjoy your family, appreciate them, and dis love on them. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, John. Councilman Harris.
Yes, I also wanna thank everyone for coming out on tonight, and I do wanna send my heartfelt condolences to you as well on the loss of, of your nephew. And know to be a different, as John has already mentioned, be a different Thanksgiving for a few of us on the dieas this year, but we continue to, you know, keep each other lifted up in prayer, and those throughout the community and city that have similar experience throughout this year with loss of loved ones. So, I just wanna wish everyone happy Thanksgiving, enjoy your time with your family. And Councilwoman Woodbury, looking forward to our last opportunity together. Because one thing I did realize, this will be the last time that we sit together in this dieas. So, and it's been, well, I'll share some more words when we get to your last meeting, but I'm just kinda reflecting on today, because this is the last time we'll sit upstairs on the tenth floor together after you've been one of my, my, my partners for the past few years. So, looking forward to your party.
Me too.
And that's all I have, ma'am.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, only a few things tonight. First, just wanna say thank you, everyone, for coming out. Also, wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you have an amazing time with your family, you reflect on all the great things that are good, and just remember to enjoy the time away. Just unplug, have a good time. We'll be back at it next Monday. But second, of course, as everyone has already said, our condolences go out to you, Councilwoman Vick. We already spoke about this, but I hope that you, hearing all the great things of your nephew during that service, I hope you know that he is loved, and we are here for you, however you need. So, we appreciate you and love you. And with that, I was thinking about something my wife told me, but she's watching, I'm not gonna do it. So, y'all have a great rest of the night. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a few closing items. So, first, I wanna recognize Rob Coleman. Rob, stand up.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We're, we're, we're excited to have you on the council and look forward to you joining Team Newport News once again. You've always been Team Newport News, but now on the dieas once again. Second, Tina, we love you. You know how we, we all feel about you, so.
Thank you so much.
Nothing, nothing more needs to be said about that.
Thank you.
Pat, this is, I'm gonna save most of the comments, but this is the last time we sit together in this, in this room. And there is a reason why you sit next to me, is because I can lean on your wisdom and all of your guidance. And so, I'll save the, the sappiness for next time, but it is, it's impossible. We don't agree on everything.
No.
But we, we agree when it matters, and your heart, you have a heart for service, Pat, and I look forward to sending you off the right way, but you'll always be Councilwoman to me. And the last thing is, is public safety, is, you know, when, when, when I became mayor, I, I wanted to be the, the pro-business, the pro-development mayor. I wanted to have cranes in the sky. All I wanted to do was talk about bringing federal dollars into Newport News. And then from day one, it's really been public safety and education, and that's not really what I wanted to do. And so, I wish we could live in a time in which we were still able to have the concealed carry and have all of those things, but the, the times are now treacherous. Public safety has to be paramount, not only for the employees, not only for the residents, but everyone that lives in Newport News. Unfortunately, that, that burden of command falls to us, but I appreciate everyone who came out, even those who stayed. I appreciate you staying for the whole meeting. And like I said, when I ran for mayor, we're not gonna agree on everything, but we can all agree, what can we do to make sure that Newport News is the best place to live, to work, and to raise your family? And that is, we want to aspire to that. We're always gonna be striving for that, but I know when I look at everyone in this room, we're gonna get there. So, with that, we stand adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving. I'll still be working. Let's go.[1775.88]